Welcome to the special Frontier Regional School Committee special meeting tonight, February 28th by 15 at the Conway Grammar School. And we'll turn it right over to...
Well, we're reviewing the budget, but usually he handles it.
Okay.
He just opened it.
I just opened the meeting bill.
Oh, sure. Okay.
You want to take over from there?
Nope, she can go. Here's where to go.
All right.
It's all yours, Judy.
Who's on first? So, the second page of the handout is sort of a summary of the major changes within the budget. So that you can see some changes in the salary area. There are increases that are in there for steps for teachers that they would get for moving up the salary scale. There is an amount that has been placed as a placeholder for potential negotiations and what that might mean to the budget. We had to move some offsets from school choice and circuit before I go back into the local budget because those two funds were, you know, a little closer to the edge than we wanted them to be. So that's that increase there. The non-union increase is basically looking at people who are on hourly contracts. And next year is an interesting year. It is a 262-day work year. Usually you figure out a work year for a 12-month employee by 52 weeks times 5 days, 260 days. Because of leap year day and some other day that I can't remember, it's 262 next year. So we had to do that shift. In the administrative area, there's some projected increases, some cost share changes, and putting the business manager's salary back into the budget in a salary line. If you remember when TMS came in, we took it out of the salary line, put it in contracted services. This just puts it back into that line. So if you look down at the operational changes, you will see that there's a little increase in the cost share for Frontier this year, about two percentage points, from 33 and change to 35 and change. So that's why that increase is there. Again, finance and administrative services, there's that decrease. That's the shift from contracted services back into the business manager's salary line. Some other just kind of small increases here and there. There was a requested increase for instructional hardware that we've put to the side for right now. There's an increase for software, just some licensing and some programs that are needed at the high school. Transportation was a significant increase in the bid when it was open, so that represents that increase. Athletics is step increases for coaches and increase in athletic transportation because that also came in higher. Some anticipated increases in utilities as well, based on what we're hearing from folks around gas, electricity, et cetera. Network telecom is slightly decreased because there's a reduction in licensing needs. Retirement contributions is some estimates based on anticipated retirements. Employee insurances, allowing for some plan changes. It is not an increase to the overall health or dental insurance. Enchikah is actually holding fast to those rates. What this just allows because there are retirements and new people coming in and anticipating that people might take different plans than the people who are leaving the district. Little increase in liability insurances, that's for the vendor that we use. And then some anticipated changes in placements that has increased some out-of-tuition, out-of-district tuitions. So the overall projected operational changes is 4.45 percent. So the net change to the entire budget is 3.78 percent. The next page is the cherry sheet, homage to back in the day when they used to mail it to us and it was on cherry pink paper. I did a little cherry pink for you. You can see Chapter 70 is up a little bit in the governor's budget. We anticipate that the legislature will increase it further. That's been the tradition. There is a significant move on the part of the legislature right now to fund the new foundation recommendations at a faster speed than the governor. The governor has put out a seven-year plan, which people don't find to be acceptable. So the legislature, there are, I think, three bills, two in the House and one in the Senate right now, looking to push that needle forward. So we'll see where that all comes out. Regional school transportation, as you can see, the governor's budget has decreased that reimbursement rate significantly. Your school choice receiving tuition is down a little bit, so your estimated receipts are down a touch. If you look on the estimated charges, school choice sending is down, so that means more students are staying at Frontier, which is a good thing. And charter school sending is also down a little bit, which means, again, more students are staying at Frontier, which is a great thing. So the net, as you can see, is a decrease of about $121,000 in revenue. Page four is just kind of an overview of who's where in terms of school choice, where the receiving students are coming from, how many students, what grades they're in, the number of students that you're sending, where you're sending them to, and what grades they're in, and then the charter school students who are going out, how many are going to various charter schools, and what grades they are in. So that's that. The next several pages is the line-by-line budget. TMS is a great proponent of transparency in budgeting, so we use a methodology called "all funds." So you'll see there are two blue columns in the budget. The one on the left represents the current budget that you have. The right-hand side represents the net budget that you would be looking at. The pink column just shows all of the expenditures, and particularly for salaries and for employees. It shows you what the actual cost figures are regardless of whether you pay them through your local budget or you pay them through grants or other revolving accounts. And if we go to, like, the top of page seven, you can see some of that thing. If you look at, for example, special education teachers, you'll notice that the all-funds budget is 379,241, but the net to you is 237,680 because there's close to $60,000 coming out of Circuit Breaker and there's $82,000 coming out of the SPED IDA grant. So you can see how those offsets are. We just believe that this is full transparency, so you can see how this all works on the back end. And I highlighted some cells within that in terms of salaries in the classroom area because if you go onto page eight, you'll notice that there are some lines that have been zeroed out. And that's because the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has requested that we change the coding for certain teachers. They no longer want us to use Function 2310 for salaries. They want us to use it for more for stipends, et cetera. So those people have already been moved into the function before, 2305, and that's just an accounting thing that is expected to be implemented this year. So that's why that change is there. And again, more of the same on page nine. You can see some classroom assistants who are being offset by special education revolving accounts. So you can see what the all-funds number is and then what the net is at the local level. And that's pretty much, and you see line by line what the percent difference is, either up or down, all the way through the budget. And when you finally get to page 16, the bottom line is there. So the proposed budget, local budget for Frontier is $11,466,415. And then you can see that's an increase of $417,961, or 3.78 percent. Questions? How am I doing, Bill?
Doing fine.
All right.
But please, the next time, don't make these numbers any smaller.
Yeah, did shrug them a little bit. I will, uh, by Monday, they'll be in a bigger print. How's that?
Even with the cheaters on.
I agree, Bill. I'm at two and a half and I have to squint a little bit.
A lot of numbers to coin into a few pages.
Those are smaller. We're going top. Come together, we can tell a story.
So the next session has to do with assessment allocations. So the first page shows you how that is calculated versus enrollment. October 1st is the sort of big day in which enrollments are taken, and it's the number that the department uses to determine all of this along with the Department of Revenue moving forward. So you can see what the totals are by town, October 1st, from 2014 to 2019. And you can see what that means for the assessments to the different towns as well. You can see the enrollment year that is dropped off in the calculation and what those changes are as well. And we have assessment to the towns, and it looks like one of them, I should have brought a cell out so you could read it a little more clearly. So let me just get to that. So the total assessment to the towns is 8,317,307. The amount variance that you can't read because I didn't pull the cell apart enough, I apologize for that, but I'll give you that number, is $385,851 and one cent. So that's an increase of 4.6. You can see the Chapter 70 numbers plugged in. You can see E and D plugged in, and the regional transportation plugged in as well. So, and that's how we've gotten to the bottom line there. The minimum contribution comparisons, again, you can see down at the bottom, and probably Phil, you could probably speak to Conway's issue better than I have because she really dug into that, so I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Yeah. The problem with Conway's...
What page are you on, Phil?
So this is page...
19.
19, 20, 21, and 22, really. But the breakdown of the assessment by town is page 21. And when you look and you see that the percent difference is just in the beginning of that little breakdown, from operating budget assessment fiscal year 19 to this year's proposed budget operating assessment, and you look at just the numerical difference, and you see Conway at 133, Deerfield 40,000, Sunderland 4,000, Whately 18,000. And so that, a budget goes up total $197,000 for the entire district, and $133,000 of that is Conway's responsibility, which on its face seems impossible and is terribly unfair. Yeah, so the thing about it is that Conway's net worth went up almost 5 percent this year. And the other towns barely moved the needle. And so that causes, and I didn't realize that Chapter 70's, the way that they calculate our school budgets when you're in a regional district depends so much on how much each town is worth and relative rates of growth. And so it's not just that our growth was almost 5 percent, it's that their growth were all at 1 percent. And so that, all of those factors together, they sort of recalculate the foundation of the district every year, and we moved way up in the rankings so that we're paying almost... When you look at the number of sending students and you see that Sunderland's, Sunderland is asked to pay $1,119,000 to the district, we're at $1,020,000. And Sunderland sends double the students that we do, more than that. So...
It's your turn to start paying for those kids.
Well, and...
We did it, we did it lately for years because of the four, because of the five-year average. Right, Bill?
Absolutely correct.
But do you know what accounts for that big increase in valuation?
So I'm told it's the Trans-Canada paying for their dam again, and Comcast paying for their whatever, and the reassessments that they did that...
I don't think we have a new house in Conway from last year.
Yeah, so... But, but these are the numbers that the state gives you on the cherry sheet, and that's that. And you call up and they say, "These are the numbers. They're automatically generated. Their, their, people don't influence the creation of those numbers anymore." But they all, you know, presumably it's a one-off thing. I mean, we can't, we can't, as a town, have growth 5 percent every year when we have no septic, we have no water system, we have no ability to attract businesses, and the... But, but we went up in value this year, so the state says, "You owe more." And, and those numbers sort of go directly to the assessment before you even get into the budget. And when you take out that 5 percent growth that we had, when you take out that whole part of the equation, we'd be looking at something like a $40,000 increase instead of a $133,000 increase, which we'd put is right in line with, you know, a 4 percent, a set, whatever. So instead of 4 percent, we're at 12 percent because...
Well, you could tell them it was 15 until we did something, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and we worked...
Was at 15 and change until we, until we did some stuff.
And I was really shocked because from all accounts, this was looking to be a fairly good budget year, I thought, especially compared to what the future may hold. And, and what our budget, the parts of it that did increase were really depressing when you look at what the governor proposed and what we have to go with on the transportation number, that in a year of record budget surplus for our state, that our transportation reimbursement is cut almost in half at the same time that our transportation costs go up by more than what our reimbursement is. And that's, so that's a 200-something thousand dollar swing, more than that, $300,000 swing, which I thought was just brutal and completely unexpected. And the other big increase was the insurance, the reserve of the insurance, I thought, you know, I thought, wow, 0 percent increase in insurance, that's going to look, but I actually did check on this too. I spoke with multiple people about what their, because they still have to put, keep some by law for changes in plans and what's in a, and it turns out that 5 percent is actually the wise recommended sort of number.
And it is, it is compared to our turnover of teachers this year. So we have to be prepared that each teacher would take on insurance as we, with the turnover of teachers. And so you got a budget for that. So there might be savings, I mean, within this, there might be savings, and that is probably, you know, the subcommittee did, we kind of breezed right over it, but the subcommittee did recommend that we put in $200,000 of E and D. Now, E and D hasn't been certified, but the numbers that we're trying to get certified put us at...
Put us at 546,679,71. That has been submitted to the DOR. There's still some back and forth that is going on. We've actually enlisted the help of Tom Scanlon to get us to that place we need to be. So hopefully, within the next couple of days, I know that Andy Paquette was going to be talking to Tom this afternoon about where that stood and to try and see this, some sort of reconciliation with cash, that the DOR is still looking for some information. So if we get that, we'll certainly submit it as fast as we can.
That, that number is pretty cool. I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but that 546 is pretty close to the 5 percent that you're capped by law. You can't, regional school district can't keep any more than 5 percent of their budget in E and D. So you start from the 546 and you work your way down. We chose to take the $200,000 down, and we have left in a reasonable cushion, the same size that we had last year, and we've got some money aside because we've got some of the capital things going on, some of the little things. There's some very little, little items in the capital proposal that we're, we're going to propose to the committee that they pay from out of E and D so they don't become part of the budget. You know, a couple thousand here, a couple thousand there for a lot of the little projects that exist in that, in the larger, the larger capital plan. So some of, we'll be coming forward with that at some point in time, using some more of the E and D. It's now like there's going to be 246, or 346,000 left in E and D because we've got some plans for the rest of it. But this is all that the subcommittee felt comfortable with, applying towards the assessments of the 200,000.
Right, and it's a amount of 4.95 percent. So you're right, you're right at it.
So, you know, I, when I saw that the numbers of Conway, I thought, you know, this town's 252 years old, 253, and we've never said no to a school budget, and this is tempting fate in history. And, you know, I just, we're fourth, though. We're fourth in the town meeting list. If the other three say yes...
They're to say yes.
Yeah.
We don't have to say yes. Doesn't matter if we say yes. It does matter. It absolutely, positively matters, but not in the big scheme of things, but in the, I was just going to say little scheme, but just in the overall supportive team kind of playing. It's very unfortunate, and it's, I don't like looking at these numbers, and I'm really glad I'm not going to be the one standing up there taking the fire, but it is.
It's a difficult concept to understand when you tell somebody that your budget's going up 3.8, the assessments are going up.
9.8.
They go, "What? How is that possible?" Because the formula is a huge, it's the factor, not just a huge factor in all this, it's the factor. And all the elements, all the component parts of that formula, we have no control over any of those. Here, here's your foundation budget, and then you work off of it from there. And that's, that's why Phil is tearing out what's left of this here because it's nothing, there's nothing you do about it. The growth factor in Conway is what it is. It generate, it gives them an assessment. It is a good budget year. You know, when you talk about, you thought it was going to be a good budget year, Phil, it is a good budget, budget year. It's a bad assessment year, happens to be this time for Conway. That's, and that's, that's the hard thing. That's what, it's going to be the responsibility of the 11 of us to try to explain that to Tommy and to people the difference between budget and assessment because they don't, they're never the same. Once in a great while, they come close, but they're never, they're never the same for factors that are not within our control.
And I thought the budget was very responsibly, been prudently put together. I have no fault with anything in it, especially when you consider what the overall number is and how much of that is the transportation that we had to absorb, then it's really modest...
There's virtually nothing left if you take the transportation swings out of this, one way up and one way down. Take them out of it, there's nothing.
It's, you know, I couldn't ask for anything more as a budget to, and then except for...
You want to go through the rest of these...
Except for that page 21.
Let's go through the rest of these pages, if anybody has any questions.
So I think, you know, we've pretty much done, you know, the assessment business pages, you know, 19 through 22, basically just lay it out in different kinds of arrays so that you can see how, how the assessments are looking. On page 23, again, I apologize for a crowding issue in the column, so let me give you a couple of numbers. The Conway regional transportation assessment is $54,729, and the Whately number is $38,283. Again, I apologize for those cutting off by Monday. That will be cleaned up.
So we have to move the gross budget, not the assessments at this point.
Correct. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Deckard?
I'd like to move the annual FY20 budget of $11,466,415.
Second? Does anybody else have anything they want to share?
That's on page 19.
Anybody else want to share anything? If not, all in favor? Opposed?
Questionable?
So moved.
It's included, I figure. Right there. I don't know. But 99,000 is what the regional transportation wants for. Why is this number there? Do you have any questions from the audience?
We just got one.
We got a question.
Do we, don't we usually vote a transportation number separate from a regular budget number?
Yes.
And why aren't we doing that?
We, so, we're not actually voting the, but this is the viewing of the budget. We're voting to bring this, I mean, I guess you were voting to bring this budget forward to...
A vote Tuesday.
Tuesday. It's not like the official vote to accept the budget. So I don't know to what formality this vote is compared, so I'm kind of, you know what I'm saying? Because I know on that one, you had to be specific to the numbers, to each one. We break it all out for the towns. But right now, we're just saying, we're comfortable with this budget and move forward to the hearing. We wanted to give some time between, that's why we have this meeting.
Doesn't regional transportation cost us more than 99,243 dollars?
You took the governor's number.
That's reimbursement.
That's the reimbursement. So, did we take the right number?
No, I took the bottom line number.
No, 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 I mean, but is it more than, that's the governor's number.
The governor's given us 99 and change.
Right. Oh, per cherry.
Last year was 179 and change.
So is that the number we voted on?
The number you just voted on includes 99,343 and not 185,924.
So aren't we supposed to...
That's cost versus revenue.
Yeah, the cost is actually 222. Aren't we supposed to, we can't go...
It's going to be higher, it's more 32. The numbers are small.
Yes, I know. I got to fix that.
I got two and a half.
I go progressive, so...
After the hearing, we can turn around and vote.
On Tuesday, we can't.
I think it's on the agenda.
We can break out the transportation number separately for Monday.
When we do the assessments, because we're going to be doing, we have to eventually vote what the assessments are going to be to four towns.
Right.
And we do that.
Yeah.
And that's when all those numbers will gel.
Yeah.
But this is the base budget is, is $11,466,415.
Yep. So can we go higher than this number?
We did that one here.
But we can, it's okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just the, correct me if I'm wrong, though, because you get the seasons on this, but this is just the reviewing, the first viewing of the budget. There's no real...
Well, we used to call it, we used to call it, what, by the time, the tentative budget figure, tentative FY20 operating budget, and then we'd vote the final one later.
Right.
So I guess tentatively, where the vote is tentatively telling the towns that this is the budget we're moving forward with, and please come to our...
Because if this is, if this is the final step on the train, then what's the point in having a public hearing?
Right, no.
If there's no, no ability for you guys to input to us next Tuesday?
And this is the reason why we're having the special meeting, is to give those, the towns, give them more time because we did condense our budget schedule.
Because we were at the Whately Finance Committee meeting, Judy and Darius and Bob and I, the other night, and we didn't even talk to them because I had, I wouldn't give them this because you guys hadn't voted on it. I didn't give them any numbers. We were in and out of there in less than 30 seconds for the budget.
So, but, question, if we're giving this to the towns to see, and we're giving them the number 99, but it's actually 200 and something, then... No, no, the 99 is the reimbursement number.
It shouldn't be the last number, I guess.
The true number is on page 12 in miniscule type under transportation, Function 3300, and that is $432,000. So we did not include that number in tonight's vote that we just took? Yes. We did, that's part of the 11... That's part of the 11.
That's that number of 185,000 increase on transportation.
No, as long as it's included in the number, I'm good. Thank you for clarifying that.
I think these numbers, the 200,000 and the 99 are negative numbers. Tuesday night is the public hearing, and after the public hearing, we'll be voting as a group for those negative numbers on Tuesday night.
Right? Unless you choose to do something else.
I get what you're saying.
You could also pause and hold the vote and...
But hopefully, we'll have a good crowd there Tuesday night.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to make sure all that these numbers all jive out because there's, they'll ferret them out. We have some Finance Committee people who are smarter with this stuff than we are. So if we made a boo-boo in here, they'll find it, and they'll, and we'll find, we'll know about it. So I just want to make sure they're all there.
So I'm writing my notes to make sure we're writing an outline to how to do the vote of each one, so we're not figuring out that...
Yeah. And this has sort of been a, I don't know what, how you described the process issue, but it doesn't seem as though the other seven of you have had much ability to input on the bones of this budget. So, you know, all I can ask you to do is take it between now and Tuesday and look at it. And if you've got some issues with it, talk to a Budget Subcommittee member, or we'll talk about it Tuesday. But you really haven't had, and I apologize... to look at the other night, and we gave, gave them nothing, because I wasn't, we weren't about, Darius and I talked about it before the meeting, I'm not going to give you numbers that haven't been voted on, because if you guys decide to change those numbers, what am I supposed to tell them? So, didn't tell me.
And realistically, within the timeline, we have until next Friday to be 45 days out for the first town meeting. So, we have the two, Monday, they have the Tuesday night meeting, but we gave ourselves a couple of days when we scheduled the thing for snow and, and final adjustments. I just want to say that, because it's not like, I don't want anybody ever to feel like they're forced to hand. We could always convene a meeting on Thursday and do a different voting, you know what I mean? So, you always have that option. You never should be forced because of the timeline. It is condensed, but there is time, and we have a week, and you can even go to the Friday, I guess, with even 45 days, along with the town.
Judy, on page 19, the excess and deficiency money and the regional, can those all be shown in negatives, so they actually, people realize that they get subtracted from the items above? And I guess, it's a revenue analysis.
No, those are revenues.
No, those are positives.
That's all, that's all positives. Those are all, yeah, I'm not sure why the E and D came out, the 200. There may be a formula issue. Again, I'll take a look at that.
I'll take a look at it.
Sure.
It's confusing.
Yeah, the E and D line can't be right.
Yeah, yeah. Something's, something's amiss in formula line, so we'll work on, we'll work on that.
Because if you make them negative numbers, it's not going to add up to 11,466.
I was trying to add it up, but I turned my machine on to see. Anyway.
I'll make sure that gets fixed for Monday, or for Tuesday.
Does anybody else have anything else?
And this will go out to the...
We'll email these to the town administrators of each town, so they can disseminate it. And so, I'll ask Judy to send it to me once this meeting adjurs.
I have a couple of questions.
All right, so we'll place it in our first thing tomorrow morning.
The one question that I had is, is in the unlikely event that the state or somebody comes through with, they're talking about more transportation, they're talking about more Chapter 70, and it's possible that it happens this spring, it's possible that it happens before town meetings. And what, what's, how does that work?
Those are revenue problems, that we'll just vote to reduce the assessments, if that happens.
Right.
You'll set the budget and vote the assessments. If we get more revenue, you can vote, you can vote to reduce the assessments, but they don't have an impact on the budget.
Yeah, you won't see the House Two budget until sometime in April, and then you probably won't see the Senate budget until late May. And last year, the governor didn't sign until July, so, you know, that's the problem is it's out of sync with town meetings.
But that becomes, that's what your E and D is. So, last year, we came forward with the governor's budget, okay? We came forward with conservative numbers, and then those numbers get inflated, and that's where we get the E and D to then push back. So, the E and, part of that E and D is actually the difference in the new Chapter 70 formula that's about later, because we know that there's going to be more money. Barring, you know, big crisis in the state, we're going to, you're going to see more Chapter 70 money, you're going to see more transportation money, because the governor's always more, is more conservative. And so, you know, that's part of that, you could say 50,000 of that, $200,000 of E and D is actually the adjustment from last year of what the state eventually provided.
Takes a while for it to fill.
I know you want to try and get any... I know you want to figure it out, but if you want to get any 10 percent, you can see what that, you can always bring it up and...
I was actually told, I was actually told that the governor's numbers for transportation were so draconian that towns all across the state are pretty much howling, and that, that there is a possibility that they might do something about that outside of the normal budget framework sooner rather than later in time for this year's thing, that there's a lot of call for that to be happening by...
Towns with a low off don't have any transportation, so that's a hard, that's a hard hill to climb. Boston could care less about transportation costs.
They care about regionalization, but they don't want to pay for regionalization. Anything else, Board?
Move to adjourn.
I'm good. All in favor? Have a safe ride home.